Everybody. My name is Eugene Driscoll. Welcome to Naval Gazing the Valley Indy Podcast. Tonight, I hope to stream for you. The regularly scheduled meeting of the Ansonia Board of Alderman is scheduled to start at 7:00 PM in 10 minutes. And this is definitely working because I can hear myself in two places, which is awesome. Sorry if you heard that too. Well, no, I wasn't sharing the screen. So you're probably not going to hear that. But I just came across this from three hours ago. I see it on my other screen here from the Town of Seymour Police Department. On Tuesday, April 11th at 2:01 PM, Seymour officers were dispatched to Gary Park on a report of a person with a knife. Again, this is Gary Park up in Seymour. Investigating officers were able to identify the suspect involved as a juvenile male. Person's parents were notified and a juvenile summons was issued for second degree threatening, second degree breach of peace. This was determined to be between several youths and an isolated incident. That's a little vague, but it sounds like a kid pulled a knife on other kids or juveniles when I, you know what I mean? When I say kids under the age of 18. No adults involved in this incident, no danger to the public. So that was from earlier today. I didn't see that in my email, but there it is on Facebook where a limited number of people see the news. All right. There's something about a stars. If you want to donate to the Valley, you need to keep it going. You can donate through stars, purchase stars through Facebook and then donate to us. The Great Give is also coming up, May, beginning of May. I don't know the exact date yet. Trying to get into great give mode. That's the one time of year. I ask people to donate to the Valley and need to keep us going. It's going to be kind of crazy this year. I had to take off last week because of a family emergency. Two, kind of. Still dealing with that, so I don't know how much I'll be posting this week. But tonight I can bring you Ansonia Alderman. We can take a look at the agenda if you'd like. I also have a story coming tomorrow. It's ready to go about Thomas Egan, a lawyer in Ansonia running for mayor. He is seeking the Democratic nomination for mayor to challenge Mayor Cassetti. Sent some information last week, but like I said, I had to deal with. My dad went into the hospital and still in the hospital in New York. So some things on tonight's agenda here. One thing I saw, this is from the Agenda Packet of tonight's Alderman meeting. We have a budget schedule in Ansonia. They're pretty much ignoring the Charter, which has become the way in Ansonia when it comes to the Charter. I'm sorry, when it comes to the budget. But we do have something we can work from. So on April 27th, there'll be a joint meeting of the Alderman and the Tax Board where Mayor Cassetti will go over a proposed budget. And then you can see all the other dates there. Tried to post this earlier, but Facebook would not let me post it because Facebook stinks. But as you can see there, April 27th will be the public's first glance on it. And then June 1st, they're supposed to approve it. Now, Ansonia, just to be fair, they say, the officials say they don't follow the Charter because it doesn't make sense to do so because they rely so heavily on money from the state to augment their budget. That it doesn't make sense to do it early as the Charter says, because the state never has a budget adopted. You're sort of guessing at these big dollar amounts. Wonder if they'll do a Charter change to deal with that at some point. I do not know. And then in terms of tonight's meeting in general, I will scroll up. Just give it, it'll only take about 20 minutes for me to scroll to the beginning of this thing. I didn't see anything that really jumps out as particularly newsworthy in this one, but I look, I looked closely. I mean, quickly. It's on Zoom, by the way, this meeting is on Zoom. If you want to go join yourself, go to the City of Ansonia website. Look at their calendar there and you can actually join in person virtually. Is that our thing? If you want to like talk or anything during the public session, because keep in mind, if you post comments here, which I welcome, they're not being seen by the participants in the meeting. But now I'm looking at this. A resolution, this is noteworthy. City of Ansonia is seeking $20,000 from the State of Connecticut Historic Preservation for the Opera House. And that's really it. This might be a really quick meeting, but it looks to me like that jumps out as something particularly newsworthy. I'll share that in the chat. We have about five minutes until the meeting begins. What's this? Oh, comment is me, that auto thing. I gotta get rid of that auto thing. But I know also Derby Boat was meeting tonight. I'll have to check on that tomorrow. I could not make that. We have some, we have a backup of stories. I know Storm Ambulance has a new ambulance. Want to write a story about Gene Fabel Sastinich attended a meeting of the Sterling Opera House Committee that was formed in Derby. They're looking to get grant money, do something to try to get the ball rolling on the Sterling Opera House. That was a big push when the Valley Indy first launched in like 2009 or so. And it started falling by the wayside because of all the other pressing needs in the city of Derby. But hope everybody is doing well out there. Feel free to leave a comment to let me know that you can hear me or not hear me or what have you while I try to vamp for the next four minutes. Guess what I'll have to do is I'm going to do a present. I'm going to do a share screen. And then it would be the Zoom meeting. So I'm using StreamYard to share Zoom. One interesting thing about all the, so there's where I'm going to go. All the government agencies that switched to Zoom with the pandemic, none of them, not to a T, none of them stream their meetings live, even though they all have the ability to. Unfortunately, I didn't figure out StreamYard until less than a year ago. StreamYard is a software thing. Got a comment from Antonino Vida Magravero. I'm sorry if I'm butchering your name, but I am a simpleton. We can hear you. Thank you so much for that. I appreciate that. I heard about the Ansonia Opera House should be interesting. Yeah, there's definitely a group of dedicated people. The Ansonia Opera House is privately owned, but they're in this partnership with the city that allows the city to secure grant money to clean up something like that. You really have to, to tap into that public money. Need some type of quasi-public agency behind you or some type of public agency behind you. And that's what's happening here. I know I've said 100 times to Anthony Mullen. Hopefully I didn't mess up that name. We want to do a podcast, but you know what? The Great Give is coming up. One thing about the Great Give, it's a 36 hour fundraiser in May. And I think I'm just going to, I'm going to go as long as I can with single stream live on Facebook for the Great Give. I want to raise $15,000 for the Valley Indy. I don't know if we're going to be here in 2024 because all our grants are up, but we'll have Anthony Mullen on. This is my chance to catch up. So I'm really excited about the Great Give this year and I'm more comfortable using StreamYard and interacting with folks. So yeah, hopefully they, they talk about, hey, Mayor Cassetti, if you're listening, give us more on the Opera House stuff. Still, I don't want to go in early. I mean, I guess there's this other thing that's been making the rounds. Furbies, they, they used, somebody hooked up ChatGPT to a Furby. It's got a million, 2 million views on Twitter. You want to watch that until the meeting begins? See if I can do this present. When I worked at newspapers, this would be the AP Weird News.
Almost done.
Oops, that wasn't it.
Hello there. It's so nice to meet you. I am Fabi. What would you like to talk about?
Was there a secret plot from Furbies to take over the world?
I'm thinking about what you said. Almost done.
One minute till the meeting.
Fabi's plan to take over the world involves infiltrating households through their cute and cuddly appearance. Then using their advanced AI technology to manipulate and control their owners. They will slowly expand their influence until they have complete domination over humanity.
Okay, so there you have it. Furbies are going to take over the world thanks to AI. So we've got that going for us. Now going to enter this meeting. Want to make sure my, yep, okay. So my mic is muted for the meeting. Because imagine if I joined the meeting, it's just me babbling like this. How annoying that would be. It would not make Alderman Mamone happy, but I'm going to join. Did I just not share the screen? I'm an idiot.
I'm, I'm here, 6858.
There you go.
Okay, so that's eight.
Let me turn off my background music.
Okay.
This meeting is being recorded.
Hello, everyone. I'd like to call the Ansonia Board of Alderman meeting for April 11th to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the Republic for which this stands. One nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Beautiful as always.
Thank you, Josh.
All right. We get a roll call, Trish.
Yes, Aldermen and women, King.
Air.
Doe. Adamowski.
Here.
Tar.
Here.
So as they do roll call, I'm just gonna
Janetti.
Remove my image so you can see the meeting there. But please feel free to put any questions or comments in the chat if you're watching.
Mamone.
Either on YouTube or Facebook and I will display them.
Blackwell.
I mean, don't get crazy.
To Libro. Eight present.
All right, declare. All right, so we had seven, I think, right?
Yep, we have eight.
Oh, either way, still a quorum. So minutes for approval, we had a few listed the March 8th. We had two meetings in March 14.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Mamone and not all in favor?
Aye.
Any abstention from the March 8th? Josh, I wasn't present. I don't believe.
Okay, we should have separated those out, but so March 8th, one abstention. And anyone abstaining from the March 14? All right, so all in favor otherwise?
Aye.
Unanimous for March 14 and then the March 8th meeting, one abstention. Yaman. All right, public session. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak tonight? As a reminder, try to keep your comments minutes or less. Please identify yourself for the public record. Does anyone from the public wish to speak tonight? Raise your hand or just talk, start talking. Looking around. Anybody? Second call for public session. And third and final call for the public session. All right. What was the public session? No comments. And we'll move on to the public official session, Mayor Cassetti.
Good evening, President Schure, members of the Board of Alderman and residents of the great city of Ansonia. Tonight, we look forward to warmer weather and a hot summer for activity and progress in our community. Let's take a look at some things to come. First, our new senior center is targeting a May opening date. I've been monitoring the progress. And let me tell you, you're going to be amazed, amazed by the commercial kitchen dining area and the incredible space for activities and events. And everything being prepared by our new senior senior director, Christine Sancini, the Assistant Director Jeff Coppola. This is a tremendous win for our seniors and I can't wait for you to check it out. Next, the long waited splash pad and firefighter themed playground at Nolan Field is scheduled to complete installation by Memorial Day. We are waiting on consistent weather to complete the install, which looks to be just around the corner. Coming soon at the Ansonia Library is the new teen room, fun teen room. And downtown is being recharged as promised. Look forward to more downtown improvements. Work this spring will begin in a grant funded project at West Main and Main Street. This will include pedestrian safety improvements and making a safer connection to the Ansonia train station. Then we have our State Street project, which is currently under design based on the comments received at our public hearing. Look for work to begin into the fall. Also, we will continue to see private development all around the city from new apartments on Main Street, including the continued redevelopment of the old feral processing lab, which will bring in 200 new residential units to Main Street. I likely don't have to remind you about the multi-sports complex being constructed at Olson Drive, but also look out for news on the rehabilitation of our animal shelter very soon. But there's even more big news. We have been awarded an additional half million dollars to continue the demolition of copper and brass site to continue clearing space for new jobs and economic opportunities. Look for continued demolition activities to occur over the summer. But maybe you want to enjoy some events this spring and summer. Grab a pencil for these dates. Earth Day at the Nature Center, Saturday, April 22nd from 10 to 3 to honor Mother Earth with our friends at the Ansonia Nature Center. Co-host this annual event. Enjoy hikes, live animals, environmental exhibitors, a farmer's market, music and more. The National Day of Prayer returns on May 4th. Thanks to Ansonia residents, Pat and Larry Bummels and their entire team for continuing this tradition. And a friendly ghost returned to the Ansonia Armory and Paracom III, May 13th and 14th at the Ansonia Armory. The Relay for Life in a Day of Family Fun hit Nolan Field on June 3rd. And the Coleman Brothers Carnival comes to Ansonia from June 27th till July 9th. And I'm really hoping to have fireworks on the last day. I'm working on that. And Rock the Valley returns on August 26th. Now I'll let my staff fill you in on some details. Thank you and God bless you all.
Thank you, Mayor. Next up, Corporation Counsel John Marini.
Mr. President, members of the board. Good afternoon. To follow up on the mayor, who gave a great rundown of a lot of the progress and a lot of the results we're seeing in the city. Want to talk about another project that he didn't hit on, the Ansonia Opera House. I mean, it's one that tends to get a good amount of attention every time we bring it up. And that's thanks in part, of course, to our very active Ansonia Opera House Committee. I believe Anthony Mullen is on the line. He's been very heavily involved with that since before we even had an Opera House project. So big thanks to the committee putting a spotlight on this project. And of course, a reminder for those who may be, you know, outside of the Board of Alderman. This is a long-term project where the city has worked with its owner, Walt Krajerski, to create a long-term 30-year lease in the hopes of restoring both the exterior and interior of this space. And I'm very happy to say that we've made some great progress preparing plans for that first phase. Sheila will tell you about an application that we just submitted for a feasibility study. And of course, as many studies are, it's not just an opportunity to learn more, but to unlock the door for more funding opportunities. Perhaps just as significant, we have learned from Shippo, which is the state's Historic Preservation Department, that this project will be eligible counting towards some of the mitigation that our city needs to do for the knockdown of SHW and copper and brass buildings. And it's not a concept we've brought up much, but believe it or not, when you bring down buildings, the state Historic Preservation gets involved. And even when it seems to be the, these buildings are sort of, you know, in bad disrepair and blighted and need to be torn down, sometimes their historic significance triggers the state to get involved and to make sure that we're still investing in other historic properties in the general area as a sort of way to mitigate, to lessen the impact of taking down the city's history. Well, the Opera House is of course very well positioned, very close to the demolition site. And they see it as a great way to continue to invest in historic, in Ansonia's history as we bring down buildings at the industrial site. So that means not only is this project going to count for what we originally intended it to be months ago when it was approved, it's also going to help with, with, believe it or not, the demolition project itself. So big thanks to this board for moving forward on this project. Big thanks to the owner, Walt Krajerski, for protecting it for so long and allowing us to move forward. And of course, to our Opera House Committee for keeping attention, keeping the spotlight on this project. Other than that, I could take any questions. We have a kind of light agenda for tonight. Any questions?
Any questions from the Alderman for Corporation Counsel tonight? All right, moving on. Economic Development, Sheila O'Nally.
Thank you, President Schure, members of the Board of Alderman. Mayor covered some of the projects that are ongoing, but we've got quite a bit. Try to keep track of it all. We recently had a visit with the State Department of Economic and Community Development and the Deputy Commissioner. They're very much interested in Ansonia Copper and Brass and SHW. They have expressed their support, their funding resources they're bringing to the table. And it was a very encouraging, encouraging conversation John, the mayor and I had with them. So hopefully we'll continue to get the necessary funding to level that, those parcels. But for a few exceptions, but we have a CMAC project that's going, going to get underway this spring and summer, which is a pedestrian enhancement project that will connect Maine to West Maine. And we'll be got, I'll be going over the details of that. It includes aesthetics, improvements, crosswalks, curbs, trying to make that train station area more appealing and the connection to the train station. And should have some news on the improvements that are going to be made to the train station in the upcoming days with a site plan ready from DOT and Office of Rails. State Street, we did have a good public hearing, thanks to to Alderman Adamowski and Alderwoman Tar, as well as all those who attended. Good comments, want to keep the project moving as quickly as possible. We have completed a site map a plan and a map that sort of lays out parcels on Ansonia Copper and Brass and SHW, which I will be showing this board shortly. But it kind of envisions, you know, an industrial park with the parcels laid out. It's only a draft. It came out of our master development plan. But it's good to see, to be able to actually visualize manufacturers and commerce in there. So the goal, of course, Mayor Cassetti's goal is to increase number of jobs and, and tax revenue for the city of Ansonia. So for, for major grant opportunities coming our way, we are going to take advantage of every one of them. Lot of good ideas about access roads for our parcels, maybe a parking deck, a pocket park. So we will, I will be updating you as we move forward. And then the Opera House, I'm looking for your support for a for a resolution. John mentioned all the good things happening with our committee and that, and that building. This is just the process with the state. If you're accessing state funds, you're going to start with a feasibility study. And if you don't start with a feasibility study, then you're not accessing funding. So that's the first step. That's what we're going to do and hopefully you'll approve that resolution. And I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll take up that resolution later. Any questions for Economic Development tonight from the Alderman? Go ahead, Bob.
Hey, Bobby.
Hi, Stuart. Do we have anybody interested in the former Big Y parcel yet? I mean, it, we keep talking about Main Street and West Maine, and that's right at the end of Maine.
It's a key, it's a key location. It's a priority project. You know, it's privately held. We talked to the owner frequently. He comes in, we talk to him on the phone. He's been working with two major players for, for that space. And he updates us and asks us for additional support letters, et cetera. We just sent one in about a month ago. So I, you know, I'm hope, we're hoping to hear from him. And I don't know if John wants to add anything to that.
I mean, I, I think that we hear this question a lot, right? Because so many things happening in the city, but the one obvious thing where there hasn't been news has been Big Y. And I think it's important, number one, to remember that there were, there was a little bit of a reason why I believe that didn't move forward quickly after Big Y left. That is that Big Y was paying their lease out. But I want to let everyone know that we have been in discussions with Alan Schwartz, who represents the company that owns the Plaza continuously since Big Y left. Not only on the phone with conference calls, but also having him down at City Hall multiple, multiple times to discuss in depth what his plans are to push forward our, 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 our hope and our need to see the site redeveloped. And I guess the bottom line is that he has articulated to us that he wants to hold out for a premium tenant. And why we really can't put names out there. He, you know, essentially wants a tenant that will be as good as, if not better than Big Y. He does not want to see that parcel go the way of, well, apartments, right? Which could be a possibility in, in other towns and other cities. You're seeing mall spaces and larger spaces being cut up into apartments. He doesn't want to see it go to what he would consider a less than quality tenant. That, that interest is always out there, but he wants to hold out for something that's going to bring a good, solid economic impact to the city and really replace Big Y. He explains to us that because of the market, because of everything with COVID, that some of these larger chains are just a little reluctant, they're a little shy to be expanding, especially in an area, you know, like, like ours, that is a little off of the beaten path. I think everything this board and everything the city has been doing to attract attention and investment to the city, however, is showing that this is a place to put your money. This is a place to expand and we really believe it's, it's just a matter of time that he's able to seal the deal. He likely is also going to be coming to this board with plans to improve and expand that Plaza in order to make room for such a premium tenant. So, you know, this board should definitely be ready when the time comes to be talking about how the city may be able to assist this important landowner in making substantial improvements. Going to bring, move the city forward and the economy forward. But unfortunately, right, it's a waiting game. We are not the owner. There's only so much we can do, but we will continue to bug and pester him as much as possible. We want to know just as much as you do, when are we going to get the replacement for Big Y? But it's a matter of when, you know, it, it will happen.
Thank you. Thank you. Just wanted to make sure it didn't turn into a Triton Plaza situation.
Of course, exactly. You know, that's always our fear is, you know, seeing a property sit around stagnant. That's, that's not what we need in the city. So I'm, you know, completely on board with what you're saying.
Thank you.
Was there another question for Sheila?
Yes. Sheila, I had a question regarding the American Brass Project. So I think the last time you reported on this, if I understood it correctly, the next step was going to be the replacement of the bridge so that it could hold heavy trucks related to the demolition. Tonight, you alluded to some demolition that might occur before the bridge. Is that, is it, can you clarify that?
Yeah, as John mentioned, we were fortunate enough to get another $500,000 to continue pushing forward on the SHW site with more demolition located on that site. And then the next, the first step at Ansonia Copper and Brass is going to be the bridge replacement.
Okay, so, so.
You're right. And it may, it may happen concurrently, but I, I, I think it takes a while. It'll take a while for us to tap into those funds for the bridge.
So the additional $500,000 is to complete the So the additional 500,000 is to complete the, uh, uh, SHW demolition?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Economic Development?
Thank, thank you, President Schuer for attending the, um, public hearing as well on State Street. Sorry, I missed you on that one. Where's Chicago with the questions? No, no Chicago.
Uh, you lucked out. Actually, Chief Williams lucked out because he usually has two or three for him. Uh, all right, moving on, Chief Financial Officer, Fiscal Officer, Kurt Miller.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. Um, just a quick report tonight because, uh, my life for the last six weeks has mostly been the budget. Um, so we are on target for our April 27th presentation of Mayor Cassetti's budget. Uh, we're kind of putting together the final pieces of that now. Um, and we expect to have everything ready to go. Unfortunately, there's still one or two areas that we will not have exact numbers on. Um, it's just kind of the nature of things, uh, particularly on the insurance side. A lot of the insurers are deciding that they want to wait. As long as they possibly can. Um, so we'll have good, strong estimates in, uh, but just understand that those numbers could change a bit during the process. Um, the ARPA audit is completed. Um, we were able to actually get that done, uh, the second day in which the portal opened. So I just want to give, uh, some credit to my staff. Uh, they've been doing an exceptional job of keeping all the information extremely organized. Uh, they actually built, built me a, a spreadsheet, uh, based on the way the reporting needs to be done. So I was able just to go right into the, into the portal, dump all the information that we have and, and move that along. So something that took, I believe it was two weeks last year, I was able to get done in an afternoon because of their organization and diligence. So I just want to, uh, to publicly thank them for that. Uh, audit is done and completed. We talked about that, uh, a little bit, uh, last month, uh, but again, very, very, very positive. And then on a final note, um, I know that you had asked for me to do some research, uh, with regards to the food waste program that we have. Um, I'm about 90% done with all of that research. Uh, we received some information yesterday. And then a bunch more this morning. I needed to kind of go back and forth with some of our vendors to make sure that they had all of our numbers correct. Uh, but I will have that report to President Schuer by the end of the month. So, uh, excuse me, by the end of the week, I apologize. Um, so he could pass that out to the rest of you, um, for discussion. And then I think if we waited until the meeting, uh, in May, uh, you can probably take action at that point if it's of interest to you. So with that, President Schuer, I'll turn it back to you and take any questions any members may have.
All right, uh, first, any questions for, um, Kurt? Okay, you also look up, si- since you mentioned it, can we, um, can we just table that item?
Hi.
And skip, uh, I was going to take up under old business, but we can just, um, table the, table that item, get a motion for that? Somebody?
I'll make the motion to table it. Table the MV cog meeting, yeah.
Motion from Tar, second by Mamone, any discussion? Are all in favor of tabling? Any opposed or abstaining? All right, so we'll take that up next month. Thank you, Kurt. Uh, next up, Police Chief Wayne Williams, already on camera, ready to roll.
Good evening, uh, President Schuer and the rest of the board. Um, I'll give you a quick, uh, update on our personnel. Cause I know we've talked about that in the past. So we, uh, we have three officers that are currently in our field training program. We also have four officers who are in, uh, this academy in New Britain. We expect them to come out sometime just before the summer, um, and then they'll start their FTO program. We also have one sergeant position to be filled and two detective positions to be filled, so we're working on testing for those now. Uh, Detective Sergeant Sturgis has been sworn in. He is now running the Detective Bureau. We haven't had a Detective Sergeant for, uh, over a year. Uh, Lieutenant Folich was doing triple duty there, so, uh, Detective Sergeant Sturgis is taking over. Contract negotiations with the police union is ongoing. I know John's in touch on that, so I thought I'd throw that out there. Um, I also want to let you know that we took possession of two solar powered speed signs. They were given to us as part of a state project. Um, so I know we always have a lot of concerns about speeding in town. Um, those, uh, signs run about $5,000 apiece and the state gave them to us. Uh, they're telling me when those strings attack, so I'm going to take them at their word as of right now. Um, I'm hoping to have them installed on a couple of streets, uh, by the end of the month. Those, especially the streets we get a lot of complaints on. Um, Police Accountability Bill, we are, uh, still headed towards our, uh, accreditation tier one, which is a three-tiered program. But we're, uh, supposed to have our inspection in July, so we are still working on that. Uh, the garage is, uh, uh, of the construction, the garage is, uh, ongoing. Possible construction is working here daily. Um, and they've been updating us weekly on, uh, how that's going. Uh, we're also prepping, along with the other events that were talked about, we're prepping for the Memorial Day Parade on May 28th. And we're starting to put together our plans for that. And then you may have also noticed that there have been, uh, a lot more motor vehicle stops taking place. Throughout the town. Um, we received a couple of grants for radar, speed enforcement and, uh, distracted driving grant, cell phone distracted driving grants. So, um, there, we've been putting extra officers out, working on those, and that's 100% being reimbursed by the state. So all the costs of that. So if you have any questions, I will try to answer them, but my normal questioners are not here tonight.
You might look at, any questions from the Alderman for Chief Williams?
I'll, I'll be the honorary Chicago, so Chief saw on the news that we were able to, uh, you know, make, I believe, a second arrest for the incident that happened on Main Street. Just, you know, cheers to you guys for, uh, following through on that. You know, the comments online and everybody, just, just heck of a job. You know, it was a awful, awful tragic thing that happened. And the fact that we could get some, um, closure on some of this is, is fantastic. So thank you for your efforts and diligence on bringing that all the way through.
The, uh, detectives have not stopped working on that, um, that case and several of their high-profile cases that are still ongoing. So I appreciate that we pass the word, but, uh, yeah, that was, uh, that was definitely, um, one of the cases they've, they've put a lot of time into.
Thanks, Chief, amazing work.
Any other questions for the chief?
Just, uh, just a, a quick question. I, I was very encouraged, Chief, to, uh, hear about the, um, speeding, speed recording machines. Um, uh, one of the, um, issues that came up at the State Street Public Hearing. Um, was the inordinate amount of speeding, particularly, um, where state meets North State. Uh, so I hope, um, hope you'll include, uh, utilization plans in the north end. Uh, particularly in that, um, in that area in the future.
Yeah, I will, I will tell you though, um, I don't usually see a lot of speeding complaints on State Street. Obviously, it's a small street. Um, but North State Street, we definitely get complaints on, uh, Woodbridge Avenue, et cetera. So we've been spreading the officers out a couple hours at each place as, uh, they're going on. Um, I will, I'd be honest, tell you that we probably have gotten a complaint of speeding on almost every street in the city at this point. Even some of them that I don't, that are dead ends, we get complaints. So, um, it is definitely the number one complaint that we hear of, um, both here at the Police Department, at the Police Commission meetings, et cetera. Um, it is something that has actually become such a problem within the state. You're starting to see, this is why they started issuing grants, these are ARPA money grants from the state. You know, with rural road, uh, speed enforcement, um, they're handing out the speed survey signs. And if you, uh, watch the news, you're going to probably start seeing speed cameras where you get the mail tickets.
Yes, yes. Well, thanks for doing, thanks for doing what you can with the, uh, the new resources.
We, we are, thank you very much, sir.
Chief, I've, I have one more, um, kind of been reading some of this online, and I think Seymour already got hit, and I think Shelton as well with this. It seems like, I don't know if it's a, a car club or something like that, where there's, there's large groups of, um, cars, modified exhaust, just speeding through. Shelton got hit, there's, there's donuts all over downtown Shelton, so they had kind of a field day down there. But I, I, I don't know, like, what? Um, being that we're so close to Route Eight, you know, it feels though it's only time before this comes ripping through, uh, Ansonia. So do we have any plans for that, one of the curves?
So I wish I, I wish I could say that we haven't already been hit, so we have been. It happened, uh, several times already. Usually what happens is they start somewhere down in the Stratford area and they work. They work their way up Route Eight. Um, I know Nogentuck was dealing with it, uh, last weekend, uh, Nogentuck, Southbury, et cetera. Um, I will be honest and tell you that normally what each of the towns, especially, you know, small towns like ours are doing. Is kind of funnel them out of town as fast as possible, put them up onto the highway. And then the state police funnel them off the highway into the towns. Um, because I, I'll be honest with you, it, it's, it overwhelms, uh, the Police Department pretty quickly. Uh, we have stopped some, we've towed some, we've arrested some, um, but, you know, dumping 400 or 500 of these cars into town. At one time, when I had three or four officers working, um, you know, they do their best to just reroute them. There's been some videos online of them through Ansonia, so, um, it is, uh, it is a problem that seems to be growing. The motor vehicle enforcement problem seems to be growing, the violations, et cetera. Um, so we are aware of it, uh, some, the local chiefs have had conversations about this. Um, but it does, uh, it, it happens rather quickly and it overwhelms really, really, rather quickly. Um, we immediately close off the Nolan Field lot early. Uh, that's the case so that they can't, because they're looking for the big parking lots, and I'll tell you that Big Y is usually where they head to.
So is it, is it just kind of they breeze in, breeze out kind of thing? They're not setting up shop per se, they're really just?
No, what happens is they, uh, they, they, they try to go somewhere and hang out until the Police Department shows up and, and moves them along. Uh, that's usually what happens. Um, so they were in town probably for 20, 25 minutes the last time they were here. And it was really just a matter, we were blocking off a lot of roads as we were going, just trying to funnel them back up onto the highway.
Got it.
And the towns, and the police departments are communicating that to each other when it's happening, so that the, the next town knows that it's, uh, that they're coming.
Okay, thank you, please leave.
Thanks, sir.
Chief, I just wanted to, uh, thank you. Um, I know, uh, several months ago, I, I visited the Police Commission Meeting regarding the, uh, that, that you could go from Daniel's Market down to Pulaski without stopping, uh, and the fact that we have, you know, multiple schools, high schools. And I wanted to, uh, say that those signs are in and installed and spectacular, the school zone signs. Um, you know, considering we have those nice sidewalks, it's, it's great to see that, um, you know, there's signage there, you know, reminding people that there's young kids walking there all the time. As, as are other people, but, um, thank you so much.
Yep, and Ford and, uh, Prindle are also two of the hotspots for the, uh, speeding violations, so we've been up there, uh, tagging cars pretty regularly.
Yeah, perfect, thank you.
All right.
All right. I got a, I got a question, if it's okay, President. Uh, yeah, um, Chief, I was wondering if you heard anything on with the bus stop at the end of, uh, Bracy Lane?
I have sent over something to, uh, uh, Mr. DeBaco, and we are, uh, working on, um, a solution, so I will get back to you as soon as I can. Is this Mr. Genetic?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I'm sorry, I have you on two different places on my, my thing here.
I'm sorry.
I will, no, I will get back to you, uh, as soon as I have a resolution.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank Joe for me.
I shall.
All right, uh, you're off the hook finally. Uh, next up Superintendent Schools, uh, Dr. Uh, DeBaco.
Thank you, uh, President Schuer and, uh, Aldermen and Alderwomen. Um, three big things to share. Number one, our emergent leaders, um, that trip. They are in Atlanta at this moment, visiting, um, historical black colleges and universities, also traveling the Civil Rights Tour. Um, getting text message updates, but I, I appreciate, um, the city and the people on this, uh, Zoom call. Everyone helped, you know, get our students there, um, pretty momentous trip for them. Two things I just want to update you on, something that I did send to, uh, the mayor, Kurt Miller, Sheila and John. It's that in the State Department of Education and their, uh, infinite wisdom. Um, we get roughly about $10 million in grants, and normally we do a drawdown and we pay, we draw the money down and we pay whatever bill that comes from that grant. Starting next fiscal year. They want us to prepay and then reimburse with the grants. And I, I just don't understand how, I mean, we, we get about $10 million, uh, a year. Ten months of school, that's a municipality like us floating a million dollars every month of school. The only, I, you know, only thing I can say is I wanted to put on everyone's radar, let people know. Um, maybe that might be a great use of, uh, our non-lapsing account to help maybe float some of that money, us being fiscally responsible. I don't want to harm the district, uh, the, uh, the municipality in any way, but I just wanted to let, um, the Alderman know about that. And the last thing is, I'm glad that, um, people are finding Ansonia a wonderful place to move and live, and I think it's a great thing. But since, uh, January 1st, we've registered well over 100 students, new students to our, our, our school district. And that's great, and I love that people find Ansonia, uh, inviting place and they want to make it their home. But by the end of this year, we'll have, I think, 12 and a half percent new students coming in. Um, most recently, um, we saw a, a large uptick from Bridgeport. I'm sure it's probably a result of 500 families being displaced. In, uh, in a, in a housing, uh, project. Um, we most recently got six new students, all of them outplaced, $100,000 each, $600,000 of special ed costs. Never budgeted, um, just because we never knew that they were coming. Um, we are seeing a, a lot of movement into, um, Ansonia and a lot from, um, pockets of lower socioeconomic status than us, and also coming in with greater need. Uh, by greater need, I'm talking about ELL, 504 and special ed students. And I was going to ask Bobby Tar to see if, I know she's in Shelton, are you seeing some of the same things? Cause I don't want to feel like I'm ringing the bell over here, I'm the only one, but it's something that we're facing and it's, and it's coming. And I don't know what we could do, and I wanted to bring it to everyone's attention, because it's getting overwhelming.
Yeah, Dr. DeBaco, we're seeing the same upsurge in Shelton in the last couple of months. And again, same situation, a lot of the students coming in are already outplaced, and we have to foot that bill. And I know I just met with Bobby Leasey, and I know he probably filled you in, but we're working on some other alternatives, but it's, it's going to be tough.
It, it is, it's, it's going to be one of those hard candy Christmases, just because it, there, we're getting a lot of people moving in with greater and greater need. So I just wanted to share that, um, very, usually always very positive. I mean, we have a great trip going on. I just want to let everyone know also graduation is expected to be the 10th of June at Nolan Field at 9:00 AM. But, um, I just didn't want to let everyone know that those things are on the horizon. The, the State Department of Ed doesn't fail by, uh, letting, uh, letting me down, and I, not just us, every municipality down. I don't know how, how municipalities are going to, uh, to, to prepay and fund, uh, a lot of grants. And lastly, um, the, the, the student movement is, uh, is, is something of getting, I mean, my special ed director, she's done a phenomenal, phenomenal job. Of holding the line for us. We've, we've cut that budget, we've, we've brought kids back. Um, it's just getting, um, when they're moving in and they're coming already outplaced, we own it the minute they move in. So it's, it's tough, it financially, I mean, I saw $600,000 on my ledger that never, never, never existed, um, prior. So I, I just wanted to share those things, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Josh, yeah, I, I have a quick question for Dr. DeBaco. Um, Superintendent, you know, I'm sorry about the undue hardship that the state is placing on the, on the, uh, especially the Alliance communities and, um, you know, just, uh, tying your hands in terms of cash flow, I think it's, I think it's awful. Um, is there anything that we can do, that this board can do, that the mayor can do, um, to support you in terms of, you know? Uh, I, I guess, you know, having a voice of the state or whatever the case may be, putting a resolution together. Not that, you know, not, not saying it's gonna move mountains, but it, you know, if there's something we can do, please let us know.
You know, um, I will, and the superintendent's, just so you know, every, I mean, I have some fellow districts I called up. And I, I don't know what, like, for example, Bridgeport's going to do, New Haven's going to do. What, they're gonna, they're, there's, there's a lot of Alliance communities that are strapped. And how, how do you float 25, 50, 100 million dollars? And the answer is, you can't, especially when I, I know for a lot of our grants, October 1st, they need our, our student count come October 1st. We really don't get our real funding till like November, and a lot of municipalities really don't get their monies till that November time. So what do we do, July, August, September? Uh, I mean, you're floating a lot of money until our grants really start to kick in. And it, it's undue to, and I, I can't believe. And it, it's undue to, and I, I can't believe, you know, like CCM, and I, I can't believe a lot of these municipalities aren't losing their minds as well, because this, this is something that was never talked to superintendents about, was never talked to Casbo, which is the, the business managers, or or the, the business people, I'm sure they would all said, there's no way, because that kind of cash flow presents a tremendous problem. So, going back to it, Sheila, if anyone ever, you know, made, helped make some more noise, it couldn't hurt. But it seems like they want to play with as much interest as they can on the state side and hold our money as long as they can.
Yep, that's right. Same, same holds true for grants, Superintendent. That's, I'm sorry, hopefully our legislators will pay attention.
Mr. President, if I could jump in as well, too. And again, this highlights the importance of having staffs that work together as well as the, the city and the Board of Education do, particularly on the finance side. As Dr. DeBaco said, he let us know right away as soon as he found out. I was able to bring this to the CCM Executive Board last week. So it's something that is now on their radar that they didn't know about. But more importantly, we've been able to proactively start looking at ways to combat this. I've already been in touch with our financial advisor, our bond underwriter and our bond counsel about looking at some different opportunities that may be available to us, because while the money is definitely going to be a challenge, and, and floating this amount of money could be very problesome, problemsome, this is going to put a tremendous stress on the Board of Education's finance staff. Because if they're gonna need to be putting in requests for reimbursements weekly, bi-weekly, you know, however often they're gonna be able to do it, that's just extra work piled on top of these folks that they haven't had in the past. So, for the state of Connecticut, that's sitting there with a record surplus. The fact that they're squeezing towns and cities, particularly the distressed areas of counties like this, is absolutely ridiculous, and the only reason they're doing this is so they can hold on to this money longer.
Right.
At a higher interest rate, to try to bring more revenue into the state of Connecticut. Now, normally, I would have, you know, I would applaud them for that, but this money that the towns and cities are not gonna see, so this is yet again, another unfunded mandate that they are pushing down to the towns and cities, and, you know, to echo both Dr. DeBaco and Sheila's comments, it's absolutely ridiculous that we have, we have to do that. But again, on a positive note, and I want to stress this again, the fact that there is such a strong relationship between the Board of Education and the city, fostered by the mayor and fostered by Dr. DeBaco. I think we're very far out ahead of this, and I think we're gonna be able to put some things in place that hopefully will allow us to combat this and, and hopefully get over the humps and and not cause us any problems, but it is something that we're going to need to, to watch very closely. And again, and we should not even be in this position. But again, unfortunately, because the state of Connecticut doesn't care about towns and cities, particularly distressed municipalities, this is what we have to deal with, so.
So Kurt, the, the, the cost of funds that are coming, because anytime you talk about flow, you know, there, there's cost of funds involved in that, that, that's that sounds like it's something, especially if we're looking at borrowing to potentially cover that, even in a short-term aspect, there's a cost that comes with that, even if it's utilizing cash flow that the city has, that, that's going to I, I guess, decrease funds that we're essentially earning interest on, so there's a cost that's associated with this, so while I think while the state is quote-unquote earning the interest, it's costing all these other towns that need to incur the cost of funds around.
That, that's correct. You know, in, in, I guess, the best-case scenario, we're just using our own fund balance to do that. But it's cash that we're putting out that is not sitting in the accounts, and if you look at, you know, our revenue lines this year, our revenue on our fund balance investments is, is well above budget, which is certainly a good thing. That's something that's gonna hamper us next year. You know, if we have to go out and get some type of notes, you know, they technically don't have a GAN or a, a grant anticipation note per se. But if you look at bands, bond anticipation notes, which would be a similar thing, you're looking right now at an interest rate in the neighborhood of three percent. Hopefully, we don't have to, to do that, or hopefully we don't have to use that. But, you know, to Dr. Baca's point, if we had to do something for ten million at three percent, you know, we're talking thirty grand. So, it's, it's something just to, to keep in mind. Or, excuse me, three hundred grand. Good lord. That's bad math, sorry.
Joe, Joe, I wanted to go back to your, your comments on the influx of high-need students. I remember researching this during the regionalization study, and I if I'm, if I'm correct, I think Ansonia was around seventy percent high needs. And of course, the definition of high needs is special ed, English language learners, and those students who are low income based on free lunch proxy. I believe Ansonia was around seventy percent, and Derby was somewhere in the area of seventy-two percent, just slightly higher. Both unusually high to begin with, among the highest in the state. And, you know, this impacts our, our city in every way possible. I'm assuming the lower wards are more impacted by this, given the availability of lower-income rentals in those areas. I'm wondering in, in your next report, if you might update those percentages based upon what is, has happened in the, in the last two years, and any suggestions you might have. You know, where this board could be of assistance. You know, for example, you know, how can this be impacted through housing policy? Do we need a moratorium on conversion of single-family homes to multifamily homes? You know, what are, what are other communities doing so that they do not become the ready magnets for overwhelming need? Because it does overwhelm everyone, and it impacts every single child in the school system. And it becomes a less attractive place for the middle class to buy a home and to send their, their, their children to, to public school, so. You know, if you could update that, and any thoughts that you or the Board of Education might have where this board could be helpful, I, I think this is, this is, this is a big issue that we, we all need to work together on.
Not a problem, Dr. Adamowski. And one thing I think we do need to remember, over, it's close to at least fifty percent or a little bit more of our housing stock is rental properties here in Ansonia.
Yep.
So, as long, that number alone is, is alarming, that, that number of fifty percent. And, and, and that, that's the number we have to address, because if people were able to establish themselves and, and actually build roots or, or, or develop roots here in the community, they stay here in the community. So, I always wish there was ways that we could help people start to purchase properties, and so they actually stay here and make Ansonia their home, not just a layover or a desk, like a destination spot for some time.
And, and, you know, it, it may be possible to impact that through incentives for homeownership and other, you know, governmental means. So, again, if you could, if you could give this a little bit of thought, and I think it behooves us all to give thought to this in terms of, you know, how we, how we do something that does not just, you know, keep increasing the percentage of high-need students.
Will, will do.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions for Dr. DeBaco? While he's on the stand? All right, thank you all for your comments, and, and this information, this is very important. All right, so so ends our public official session. We'll move on to committee reports, Finance Committee.
Like to make a motion to pay all bills if deemed correct?
Second.
Motion by Mamon, second by not to pay all bills if deemed correct. All in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? Our motion carries unanimously. Any other committee or subcommittee reports anyone wants to highlight? Got a few in your packet. I just, I just want to, again, thank all those departments that do submit those reports. They don't go unnoticed. They do get read. So I appreciate that. All right, so moving on, we have the vote recommendations from the, from the last meeting.
Motion to accept.
Motion to accept by Mamon. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Tar. Any questions? All right, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions? All right, motion carries. Also in your packet, the tax collector report from March twenty twenty-three.
Motion to accept the report. The refunds are separate.
Yep. Just the, just the tax collector report. Tony, Mamon, with the motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by not. All in favor? Opposed, abstentions? All right, unanimous, and then the request for refunds. It's the amount of one thousand four hundred and sixty-seven dollars and two cents, if deemed correct.
Motion to accept as noted.
Second.
So by Mamon, second by Tar, all in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion carries unanimously again. There was no land unit use report, although it was on the agenda, there was none in the packet, so we'll skip that. There were no accidents and claims this month. No communications, no resignations, and the one resolution that was brought up by Sheila earlier, resolution number one, this is regarding the state of Connecticut Historic Preservation for the Ansonia Opera House. This is to apply for a grant in the amount of twenty thousand dollars, and that, she said the first step would be would be the resolution being approved by us. Anything to add to that, Sheila?
No, I, I mean, it's a, there's a small match, which is a ten percent match on the city side, the local side. And it is a grant for a feasibility study to tell us, you know, what, what order and which to address the issues with the Opera House.
Okay. And then the, the wording of the resolution is, is included on your packet, I won't read that out loud, but, I mean.
Who's paying the two thousand? Us or the owners?
We are hoping to be, we're hoping for a combination of fundraising, some from the city. And I believe the owner has put some, you know, has made some improvements to the Opera House, so although that doesn't count, it does count in, in terms of, you know, moving us along.
And there has been, as you noted, there has been some fundraising on, on that front, but.
Good question.
Good question, Bobby.
I remember when we talk about the project now, we understand that this is going to overall count towards mitigation. So, you know, I may not have, it's sort of a new concept, but essentially the state is saying you're knocking down buildings at SHW, so you owe them a hundred thousand of your own money put into another historic site. Now, on one hand, you could say, what are you talking about? You, you know, you're bringing down some dilapidated buildings. The historic value is really, I mean, is that even significant, given the lack, you know, of jobs and and, and what we're gonna do there, but believe, you know, but the state does require that, so the idea that we have a viable project here to invest into that could count towards that, that's amazing. That's allowing us basically to move on copper and brass. So there's a value added that we never thought would be really tied to this project.
Can we retro that hundred thousand to other projects we've done in the past?
No, no, they, they need to approve the project, so we brought them down specifically to the Opera House. Shippe went through it, and we were able to basically say, look, you know, the exterior alone is going to be a project which is gonna cost at least a hundred thousand dollars. And it really could show a wonderful commitment to the city in historic renovations and restoration. And it's something that definitely Shippe could be proud of helping out on, right? They're not only interested in having this property count to our mitigation, they're also interested in helping us do it, and helping us access the funds that we need to do the exterior and maybe even move into the interior. So it's a great, a great way that these two projects have intersected. So again, I, I wanted to say this just because, you know, a small amount like that in the grand scheme of things, now it's doing more than just helping this project. It's actually now helping solidify an arrangement that we have with the demolition project on, at SHW.
Go back for a minute. If we choose, let's say, that we don't want to put any money into that, what, then then we owe someone a hundred thousand dollars, is what you're saying?
Yeah, you're gonna have to find another project to put at least a hundred thousand dollars into, that's historic and that qualifies with Shippe.
You're not saying we have to put a hundred thousand dollars of the city's money into the Opera House?
Well, you're gonna need to put a hundred thousand dollars of the city's money into historic renovation. Yeah.
But, but Bobby, so that, the plan, the plan is that the investment in SHW with the tenants that are already interested in going in will generate the revenue to put back into the Opera House. We are, we are not intending the, the municipal, the city of Ansonia to be paying out a hundred thousand dollars.
That was my question, because that's what we talked about.
There's ways to defray it, yeah. There's ways to ultimately defray it, but the, the obligation does rest with the city, so of course, there's gonna be an amazing amount of revenue generating opportunities to do it, but basically, it is the price, right? Mitigation. It hits, it's, they see it as lessening the impact of us taking down those horribly dilapidated and contaminated buildings. You know, it's, it's what the state requires.
All right, so did that answer those questions? For you, Bobby?
I don't know. Well, I guess we'll see. I mean, I thought the intent was for us to not have to pay any monies from the city to this project when we all agreed to take on this project with the owner. That was the initial presentation to us, so that has changed.
Yeah, no, Bobby, it's, it's not changed. The intent is the same. We, we intend to raise money, to secure funds through grants, and to offset costs, as John mentioned. The, the intent is not for the city to, you know, hand over money to fix the op, fix a private owner's property. The intent is to secure the funding through grants through, you know, through investment in other properties. So there are ways, there are ways to do that, so it doesn't hit our, our purse strings. But just, just to be clear, this resolution is, is simply for a a feasibility study, and the match is four thousand dollars, and we have some of it raised fun, through fundraising. Anthony Mullen has done with others on the committee. And we have some set aside for professional services that I use. I know it's city money, but.
What happened to the windows? I thought we were starting with windows. I mean, I'm, I'm again, it just isn't what it was initially proposed to be. That's okay.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Didn't we sell a small portion, maybe a quarter, what, half an acre on that, along North Main Street and Liberty Street?
Bobby, good memory.
Our generation, can we, that money and put it towards what you're looking to do now?
It's a possibility. That's a, a question for, you know, it's a discussion for finance and the mayor and John and but yes, absolutely, that, that's the intent. There, there is money coming in, hopefully from the fuel cell people that want to rent a half acre. And that, and that's also a good source of income for this project.
All right, so we have the resolution, which is to hopefully garner a grant for a feasibility study. What do we want to do with it?
So, this, this is gonna come back, so the, the, the five hundred thousand, hundred thousand backing it, that's gonna come back for a second resolution, I believe? Is that fair?
Tony, are you talking, the five hundred thousand is a, a flat-out grant for SHW. This is simply a twenty-four thousand dollar feasibility study, twenty of it is grant-funded. And four is the match. And that's what this, this resolution is for.
So this feasibility study kind of walks us into that hundred thousand dollar investment John was mentioning?
It, it does, it walks us into that. It also taps into more funding, more historic preservation funding.
And does, does that secondary grant, does that come back through the board for approval?
Yeah, every, every grant, a, and anything we're, we're doing to make application. um, to make application for that, for that facility will come back to this board.
Bobby, I hear what you're saying, I, this, this is with the feasibility, so I'm kind of, kind of curious to see what's behind this, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm with you, Tony, I understand what you're saying, I just.
Yeah, the other piece I wanna, I wanna talk about a little bit more when that comes back around, because I'm, just, just had, again, some of those same concerns that you had, but if, if there's no questions, I'll make a, a motion to accept this resolution as.
Alright, motion to accept resolution number one by Mamon.
I'll second, but I also have a comment.
Alright, second by King, and then, uh, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to, to clarify, I understand the feasibility study and it's a match, apparently this one's twenty percent, normally it's ten. But, you know, whatever we gotta pay to get this rolling, the historic preservation part of it, a hundred thousand, we have, historic sites coming out our ears, so it doesn't necessarily gonna have the hundred grand to the opera house, it could be, you know, windows or sandblasts or whatever, but we also across the street have the walkway between, the new project that's walking, that it's working, um, that's actually historic. We have the hundred steps that need to be rehabbed for the last several decades, that would count. Our own city hall, our armory, several city owned properties. So we have plenty of places to spread this out, so covering of like basically a hundred thousand dollar like makeup fee for tearing something down. We don't have a problem finding places to do it, and we have plenty of good opportunities. I'd rather see if we're gonna spend fifty, a hundred grand, have it be something that people can see. So either the exterior of the building, or walkways, or something, the city hall, or the armory. We have options, so we're, we're not locked in, that's, that's my point. That's it.
It's, this is locked in, this twenty, this study is locked in tied specifically to the opera house, correct?
Right.
Right, okay.
But that part would just be going, overall with the state, the hundred thousand dollar figure that we keep reverting to. Doesn't have to be to that one site.
Alderman, it does need to be approved by Shippo, it's, it's not that we can say.
Well, yeah, with Shippo, but we have other things we can throw in there.
They need to, to see the project, they need to accept the project, and they need to actually approve the work that's being done, and right now we know, that they like the opera house project, that the opera house project is acceptable, it's gotta have an impact, and the opera house is the kind of thing that makes that impact.
Is the owner splitting with us at least on this? Four thousand that we have to come up with through fundraising, whatever, is, uh, is he paying two and we're paying two?
You know, truthfully, uh, we haven't asked, but we could always ask.
I mean, he's the owner.
Sure.
I, I'm just, go ahead, take your vote, take the vote.
No, sorry.
Oh, so we had the mo- motion in a second, I forgot who it was already, I know Dan was the second, um. Do you have it, Trish? Okay, uh, so all in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I'll abstain.
I'll abstain, well, so.
Abstentions, Tar and not. Alright, so motion carries, thanks. Uh, move on to appointments, they're, uh, in the mayor's letter. Um, we got one, two, three, four, four appointments. First one, Fair Housing Officer, one year term, um. And this is a motion, uh, to reappoint Anna Rodriguez, um, Republican of, Blaski Highway, term to expire four, one, twenty-five.
Motion.
Motion by, second by Tar, all in favor?
I have a question.
Yep.
It says one year, why is the term like three years? Two years, sorry, my math is off.
Oh, yeah.
We've done, we do this every year, I know, this is like, oh, this is a, I'll check on that, that the end term, to see if that's. Um, but we do, we do renew this one every year for a year. Alright, so with that, with that noted, I'll, I'll check the date. Um, but the nominee is the same. Somebody, somebody, um, Yamman made the.
All amend.
Oh, okay. Amended by Yamman, do we have a second?
Second.
But then by Tar, all in favor? Uh, next one, we have one, uh, nominee for inland wetlands enforcement officer. Um, Richard DeCarlo, uh, Republican of three, two, five, Olivia Street Derby. As the inland wetlands enforcement officer.
I have two questions here.
Sure.
Does this have any conflict with the current blight, um, responsibilities?
Um, trying to think who would answer that. John? Is there any conflict with?
I'm mute.
Oh, sorry, guys, what's the, does it conflict with? Light officer role? In any way?
Um. Light officer has general, uh, enforcement duties, but it overlaps and has always overlapped with other enforcement functions, so no.
Okay.
We're just, we're, we're missing a, a term on this too, Josh.
There's no, oh, wait.
Yeah, there's no turn.
Judge, following up on, um, Alderman Ramon's question, um, what are the, what are the hours worked? Uh, in the blight officers position?
Light officer in the wetlands.
No, well, starting with the blight officer, I, I was under the impression that was a full-time job, apparently it's not.
So the blight officer has been part-time, it's a part-time role. And your blight officer is mainly concerned with violations of the blight code. Uh, he also pitches in with other code violations, working in connection with our, uh, chief, um, land use officer, Rhonda Perini. The, uh, inland wetlands enforcement is more specifically related to issues of inland wetlands and doesn't have anything to do really with blight. Has just to do with, um, you know, sensitivity to wetlands areas and whether they are properly developed or not.
So, uh, is it twenty hours a week for the blight work?
Nineteen and a half is part-time.
Okay, and then how many hours, uh, uh, go with the, uh, inland wetlands, uh, role?
That tends to be an as-needed position rather than a regularly, a regular part-time or full-time role.
And, and how is that paid? Is that paid when a person works? Or is that like a stipend?
I believe that's a stipend, technically a stipended position in the budget, um, Kurt. Um, could go a little further into how it's administered, but essentially, I mean, a stipend is basically a smaller salary.
Yeah, we, we budgeted out for nineteen and a half hours a week at a set hourly rate. Um, and then he puts in the hours as he uses them.
So it's a de facto, so it's not like, like your normal part-time position, it's, it's budgeted for that, but it's, a inland officer is not working to the same capacity as a blight officer. That has a regular beat in the wetlands, is only going out there when an issue comes up, an issuer arises, and it appears that a violation of the inland wetlands, um, regulations has been committed.
Do the two budgeted sets of nineteen and a half, uh, push this into a full-time position?
It's just one nineteen and a half hour pool each week that's used for the two.
So Kurt, correct me if I'm wrong, there, the, the hours for this position for this individual are capped at nineteen and a half?
Correct.
Okay.
Are the inland's wetlands or for the blight? Or for both?
Oh.
So there, so this person, in, if they're in both positions, they can work thirty-eight or thirty-nine hours a week?
No, nineteen and a half.
Nineteen and a half.
No, it's, that, so. They're able to kind of, as long as they're staying within nineteen and a half hours, able to crisscross those responsibilities of blight and in the wetlands, remember.
And they're not spending nineteen and a half hours on blight if they're doing the other stuff like Steve said.
There's a lot of, of crossover, right, wh- where blight intersects within the wetlands, it's, it's more of an efficiency, I would say.
John, I have two questions if everybody else is done. Um, first, uh, there, is there any, um, either statutory or municipal restriction in terms of it must be an Ansonia resident?
For the off, inland, uh, blight enforcement?
Yes.
No.
Okay, for, not for inland wetlands?
Not, not for, not for either.
Okay, and two, are there any, is there any training that, um, Rich will have to undergo in order to do the inland wetlands enforcement?
We send our land use staff to the regular, and you've been a part of those training seminars as well, the regular land use seminars. Apart from that, it's really working under the guidance of both Rhonda, and of course, you know, the inland wetlands commission to be, you know, making sure that you're adhering to the regulations.
Right, but there's, okay, I just wanna make sure there's no specific enforcement.
No certification or no, unlike, and, and, uh, Alderman Yamman is right to point out, you know, for those that don't know, certain enforcement positions, uh, building official, for example, um, you know, it does require zoning officer, requires a certification. Before you act in that role, but that is not the case with, um, with these roles.
Okay. Thank you.
But with this position, um, within land wetlands, basically, I don't, I think I'm almost missing the point is, there's a stipend, it's salary, it's provided regardless of hours. Or whether or not they have anything to do.
It, it's, no, it's, this is a stipend that's, it's budgeted, but it's being provided based on your hourly reporting. So you're not getting over nineteen and a half, um, no matter what you.
So is there an hourly rate or is it a stipend? Cuz if it's an hourly rate, it's a job, there's a payment, hours would be tracked. Or is it a salaried position slash stipend? To provide those services.
There's a budget.
That we budget for nineteen and a half hours. And the person hands in a timesheet and tells us the number of hours that he works.
Oh, okay, well, what's the pay rate then?
Off the top of my head, I don't have it in front of me.
Alright, so for the inland wetlands investigation for that, we don't know, we're gonna vote on it, but we don't know what, how much or what we're paying for that position?
It's nineteen or twenty dollars an hour, I, I just don't know the exact number in front.
It's about twenty dollars an hour based on what they do. So that's an hourly position, it's not a stipend. It's an employee who holds into position, two hourly position, I just wanna make sure that if they overlap with the work, that they don't become, um, a full-time employee.
They cannot become a full-time employee because it's only budgeted in total for nineteen and a half hours a week.
They're not gonna ever work more than nineteen and a half hours.
Doing two different jobs though, together, can, can we like legally separate those as a?
The inland wetlands officer has never truly been a part, a real, a real part-time or full-time job, it's just you're assigned to go check out issues. Involving inland wetlands, usually involving a proposal that comes to planning and zoning. Sometimes they're, they're rarely, but sometimes there's an issue where someone says, hey, uh, did you locate, you know, um, an addition on wetlands in your backyard? In which case, I guess, like blight, you'd be going out there to inspect. But usually this is happening during a proposal, a development that's occurring, and you wanna make sure that the proposed development is not pushing into the wetlands. But of course, the whole commission is involved, it's, you're, you're using the staff member to be reporting back to the commission when the commission is not available. But in no case would this individual be working beyond nineteen point five hours, and so there would be no, no concern that they would be, um, considered in any way to be a full-time employee. It's just that designation, it's a designation.
Okay.
Historically.
I mean, I just wanted to clear that out because it comes up in the future.
Yeah. Historically, has, has our blight officer also been the inland wetlands, inland wetlands officer as well, I think, correct? Historically?
He, he's been covering that position for well over a year, this way, yes.
And there has been overlap in the past, to my knowledge, Josh.
Yeah, yeah, that was my.
This is nothing that's new, so.
And in other communities, it's the same way.
Correct.
Thanks, Joe. Alright, so, um, do we have any, uh, do we have any information on the term? Uh, expiration, it's the only one that doesn't have a term listed.
It's not really an appointment, Josh, it's a, you're hiring an employee, so there really is no term to it.
That's what I was thinking, is why, probably why it was in there, is as needed until, because replaced, right?
We pass on this.
What's your, what do you guys wanna do? Um.
Would a, would a, would a better approach be to just change the job description of the blight officer to include?
These inland's wetlands.
Yeah, he certainly could, I mean, it's, um, he certainly could. It's, again, like I say, it's more of a designation. Than it is anything new, you're, you're not hiring a new person, you're just allowing him to function in that capacity, have that title when he goes to the inland wetlands board.
Well, it is a job, if we pay somebody, it's a job.
Right. It should just be an included duty of the blight officer, that makes, that makes it cleaner. And it's not that he's holding two different jobs, but it's just a duty that falls under the blight position. For the same nineteen point five hours, this way, whatever he's working on, it falls under both. Correct?
Yeah.
Cuz he's not putting in any more time than nineteen point five.
Listen, it's, it's more of a, it's, it's a case of the regulations say an inland wetlands enforcement officer can ask people or order people to do certain things. So we need to designate an inland wetlands officer, so that person could have their name on the paper that goes out to make those orders. And so I believe what the land use department was trying to do here was make rich that person, so we have a person to investigate and make those orders. Where right now there is no person. So it's not the intention to create a new office, to create a new employee, bring in a new employee, but to re- put, uh, Mr. DeCarlo into that position, so he's empowered to be the enforcement officer under the regulations. But you're right, I, I suppose if you just, you know, if you try to, I, I guess, change that title, so it's not the blight enforcement officer, but rather of a code enforcement officer, then we could very easily marry all of these enforcement mechanisms that he's able to do, that don't require those extra certifications into one position.
I, I have Rhonda on the line if you need clarification, I don't, I don't even.
I like Bob, but what, what happens, what's his experience and, uh, expertise in the inland wetlands field when we have to go to court for something? Is he just gonna fall apart? His theories.
Certified to be inland wetlands, he took this class and got certified.
Okay.
Correct, he's certified.
That's fine, I didn't know that.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Uh, alright, we have a motion to approve by Yamman. We have a second? Radio silence. Think that needs more research. We don't have a second, so, um.
Okay.
Table it.
I don't think we need to do it in this way, like this, I mean, he's already acting in the capacity, I think he doesn't need to be appointed necessarily by this board to the role. Sounds like he's already doing the work, but.
Yeah, I mean, multiple people have said that, that, that these jobs intersect and have intersected historically, but okay. Um, so, uh, what, what's next? No action?
So Rhonda, could you, can you kind of explain to them?
I guess, I recommend no action, and at the next meeting, land use department will be present to explain their proposal.
Okay, I'll withdraw. Okay, no action, alright, so we have two other appointments, uh, both, uh, three-year terms. Um, W, Pollution Control Authority. First nominee, Brian Lasky, uh, Republican, one sixty-two Hull Street, Ansonia, term expiring twelve thirty-one twenty-six.
Motion.
Second by not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You oppose? Any abstentions? Alright, second nominee, Anthony Lovinsky, Republican, Three Hoynski Way, also Ansonia. Term expiring one thirty-one twenty-six.
Motion to accept.
Motion by Mamon, do we have a second?
Second.
By Tar, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, any abstentions, alright? Um, we have, that's the end of the appointments.
You have one more, Josh.
I got one more, Emily, on the next page, Josh.
Emily Quinn for zoning.
Yeah, I didn't even turn it over, my bad, um, zoning, uh, Board of Appeals, a, uh, um, five-year term, doesn't seem to make sense.
And that's the wrong date too, for five years.
Unless it's a continue, continuation, Emily Quinn, unaffiliated, alternate. Thirteen Holbrook Street, um. Thirteen Holbrook Street. Um, who made the, who made this uh?
I'll make a motion. I think she's filling out her father's term.
Yeah, I believe she's filling out her father's term.
It's okay.
Yeah, Dennis Quinn.
Five-year term, it's it's completing that term. So the term does expire twelve thirty-one twenty-four, thirteen, which street. Second by, who was it?
Mamon.
Perfect.
All favor?
Aye.
I opposed abstaining. Thanks for keeping me on task. I didn't even turn the page over. All right, uh, we have no ordinance this month. Um, new business, we had one thing that came. Uh, new business number one, this was a letter from uh the state of Connecticut Department of Revenue Services. Um, the NAA program, Sheila, can you um briefly explain this? Or not?
She's muted.
She's muted.
So you're muted.
I'm texting. I'm sorry, guys. I stepped away. What's, what, what are we at?
New business number one, the the letter from Mark uh Bauton from the uh Department of Revenue Services. This is the NAA. Can you just like?
Yeah, uh, uh, very quickly. So this com- this program comes out every year. It's um, it's an opportunity for municipal departments, for nonprofits. Um, anyone who has a project that they need a little extra funding for. What it, what it does is it entices businesses to contribute to the project. They donate it. They basically get, I think it's one for one, um, a tax, one for one tax abatement or tax. Um, it's failing me. The words are failing me. Anyway, one for one um on their investment. So for projects worth fifty thousand, they get fifty thousand dollars in tax credits to be used. So for companies up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So for example, the nature center wants to build another uh ca- um case for snakes or whatever. Um, they uh, they can uh complete this form, put their project down, we send it to the state to be approved. If it's approved, we, the next step is to do some uh marketing and some, you know, s- searching for donors type thing, but it's a good, it's actually something for the Opera House as well, like we can, we can encourage people to donate to the Opera House, the companies that are looking for tax write-offs. Finally, the word came to me. Um, can, can participate in this program. It's a good program. It's it's um, it just, it helps out if we can get the donations in. So just asking for, I need a resolution to, I believe, to participate in the program.
Yeah, but thi- this is not a resolution then. So will we, is this, are we just talking about this and then we'll have a resolution next month or how how's that work?
You need a resolution, Sheila, or you just need authority?
Oh, I guess I just need authority. Thanks, Joe. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Motion to give authority to apply.
Thanks.
Second.
Let's show, all right, so motion by Yamman, second by Tar. Give authority to the city. Um, sounds like a good idea. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? All right, motion carries.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Let's see, no old business and no executive.
He really is Chicago. It really is.
I've been empowered by Mr. Rivers. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Mamone. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Yamman. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
The recording has stopped. Well, how about that? That was the regularly scheduled meeting of the Ansonia Board of Aldermen. Let me see if I can get out of there. Stop sharing. X out of there. So uh, thanks to everybody who joined. I saw at one point we had, excuse me, let me move this microphone. We had fourteen people in here live at one point, and if you look, I mean, there was twenty-two people in the meeting. But the majority of them were appointed officials or city uh employees. I think they had nine, maybe people who weren't directly connected. So actually, more people watched this on the Valley Indy Facebook page, while not a huge number of people. But uh, more people watched here that actually attended the meeting, which is good, right? Information, free information a-flowing. Some highlights from the meeting, I guess. So let me bring up if anybody has any any comments or questions, make sure I don't miss them. Oh, you're all sleeping. This is, this is fourteen people asleep in front of their computers right now, but uh, I didn't bring my glasses. Senior Center, supposed to be opening in May, according to Mayor David Cassetti. It had been scheduled to open in March. I'm not sure. He didn't, nobody addressed that delay. But it's supposed to open at some point in May. There wasn't a definite date given. The splash pad, the long-awaited splash pad, which I believe came from a complaining comment from the Valley Indy once upon a time, complaining that there was no splash pads to take my kids to locally. I'm just gonna take a shadow credit for that, deep state uh credit. But it's supposed to be opened by Memorial Day. They're waiting on, quote, consistent weather. According to Mayor Cassetti, that's exciting. There's a teen room opening at Ansonia Library. They mentioned uh they're going to be using grant money to make pedestrian improvements and safety improvements at the intersection of Main Street and West Main Street, along with making improvements to the ugly Ansonia train station. I say that because my office was there for eleven years, very familiar with that area. And that is a, yeah, there is people hit by cars there, uh, probably more often than there should be. Mayor talked about uh two hundred apartments coming to Main Street. That's sort of old news, but he's reminding people there is a lot of construction in downtown Anso- uh downtown Ansonia, an amazing amount of construction happening. June twenty-seventh to July ninth, we got the Coleman Brothers Carnival coming in to the city of Ansonia. I guess Nolan Field, I'm not a hundred percent sure on that either. Big Y, I believe it was Alderman Knott asked what's up with Big Y. Big Y is, of course, the big empty shopping center. It's not completely empty, but there's a big hole in a shopping center off Main Street across from Target there, and they've been talking about that. They basically said the same thing they've been saying for at least two years, that there's two, quote, major players looking in, and they talk to the property owner or representatives of the property owner all the time. They said again that John Marini said that they believe part of the reason it's remained empty for so long is because Big Y ran its lease out, so they were actually paying, even though they didn't occupy the place. They moved to Derby to beautiful new store on Route thirty-four. Uh, one thing that jumped out to me that I had not heard before is that Marini, the corporation counsel John Marini, said that the uh property owner or representatives of the property owner may be coming to the city at some point for an expansion of some type. So apparently something's in mind, but they might have to make changes. Might have to make changes to the property before they move forward. Another thing that happened, Ansonia School Superintendent Joseph Debaco talked about how the school district is being overwhelmed. Was the quote. By students arriving from other communities with high needs, meaning uh students who are enrolled in special education, uh, English as a second language or ELA. Uh, he also described the students as low income. Special education can be very expensive because if the students, if the students can't be taught in their home district like Ansonia, let's say, and they need to be, they need to go to another, a third-party place. Uh, of course, the local taxpayer fits or foots that bill. Also, you saw Alderman Adamowski, a retired school superintendent, address that subject. He had noted that the percentage of high-needs kids in Derby and Ansonia seems to be among the highest in the state for some reason. He noted that fifty percent, or Debaco might have no- noted that fifty percent of the housing stock in Ansonia is rental. So it's, so I didn't really follow where they were going with that, but it kind of sounded like we hear all this talk about the need for affordable housing in the state of Connecticut, and there's no affordable housing in Connecticut. But you can find it in Ansonia and Derby, perhaps to a fault. I mean, is, and I I'm sort of speculating here, because this is not what they said, but this is just based on my reporting. You've got other communities where it's become more and more and more expensive, uh, where people can't live, people can't afford to live. So Ansonia and Derby get more than their share of people flocking here because it's still affordable. But what that creates a lot of issues in terms of services and education uh, when your poor cities to begin with, and Ansonia and Derby are both not only alliance districts, which means they get extra money from the state because they're underperforming school districts and underfunded school districts, but they're also economically distressed municipalities, according to the state. So, and I mentioning Derby because Derby said whatever, everything you just heard, if you're watching from Superintendent Debaco, has been said in Derby same way. Uh, and I guess, yeah, the other big news was that the city of Ansonia, the Alderman granted permission to the city to apply for a grant to do a feasibility study for the Ansonia Opera House. I'm gonna cough. And what that is in terms of planning and getting money for that Ansonia Opera House, which is privately owned, but there's a partnership with the city going on. The first step is you have to get grant money to if, to do a feasible, you have to do like, you have to get grant money to do a study, to do more studies, sort of thing. But you gotta do that feasibility study where it spells out what needs to be done here and what, you get somebody to tell you, an expert, to explain the order you should go in. The same thing was done in Derby over the last twenty years or so. And why you see the outside of the Sterling Opera House in in Derby looks great. They got, they did all these studies and spent the money and got the grants to get that done, but the interior in Derby still eludes the city. Only three people. We went from fourteen to three. Gonna take that personally. All right, what else? Well, that was really it. Uh, then there was that discussion at the end, rather lengthy discussion. There was a proposal to give one person two job titles. I believe it was blight enforcement officer and inland wetlands officer. Ultimately, the Aldermen seemed too confused or had more questions. Were kind of giving it the uh, the side eye, and they ultimately tabled it. So, all right. Go to valleyindy.org shortly to read a story about who wants to run for mayor in the city of Ansonia other than the current mayor. Thank you all so much for watching. My name is Eugene Driscoll. Great Give is coming up. I don't have time to get ready for it. I'm gonna do my best if you can support the Valley Indy during the Great Give. I would appreciate it. Bye.